...special work session meeting to order, May 2nd, 2016. We do have a forum, public forum. Individuals may address the city council on items not included on the agenda. Speakers are required to state their name and address for council records and limit to remarks to three minutes or less. Speakers are requested to bring their comments around items that fall within the authority of the city council. January in the city council will not take official action on items discussed at this time, but may place the item on file to take the matter under advisement, refer it no matter to staff or a committee for a future report, or direct the matter to be placed on an upcoming agenda. Anyone wish to speak? Yeah, Matt, it's on.
You're kidding, right?
Yeah.
Gotta have a sense of humor coming here.
Exactly.
Robin Hansel, 807 First Street Southeast. If I think my audience isn't paying attention, you may experience some surprises in the future. I'd like to know why Mayor Zilka didn't get consent from the council to proclaim the March 1st for Franciscan sister day like he stated he needed to do for any new proclamation, like he suggested with my peace proclamation. Why didn't you get consent to this council when that was a brand-new proclamation, Mr. Part of what I feel is my obligation, since I'm vested in this city now, is to alert the public to things that I find interesting in the council packet. And from the last council packet came this interesting request for the following records relating to the Pine Grove Zoo from January 1st, 2013, through the date of this request is processed, which was April 7th, 2016. It says permit applications submitted by the zoo, issued permits, contracts with the city of Little Falls, email correspondences related to the zoo, zoo animal inventories, and records of animal sale or transfer. And it's a typewritten request, kind of unusual. I would like to read something from the EDA minutes, and of course, our good mayor is president of the EDA, that's Economic Development Association, which is good at handing out a lot of business welfare. It says, "Item C, Clark Jiffy Lube Lot and North Bluff Lot. Motion was made by Bob Ryanhitz, seconded by Jim Kleinschmidt, to accept $500 refundable deposits for city-owned lots. Lots will be held under the deposit for up to 90 days, allowing a first right of refusal on the lots being held." And it says something really interesting, downtown revitalization. As if we don't give out enough business welfare as it is, discussion was held on developing an EDA-sponsored program to help owners of buildings in the downtown area with the interior improvements. So now, our city is not only going to help the business owners to refurbish the exterior of their buildings, but the interior. I wonder who will be first on the list to go for that grab money. From another meeting minutes, it says Lori Casella discussed information with the board on a property located at 55 First Avenue Southeast. This is dated March 14th, 2016. After discussion, Commissioner Gosick moved to give permission to a small section of property to which explorers and more to help square off the property and also negotiate with the realtor for a small section of land. Permission was also given to discuss a waiver of subdivision cost and survey of property.
Time's up, Robin. Thank you.
Nice gift.
Helps to know the whole story sometimes, though, too.
You know, I had to miss that meeting.
Council from my information, all the items, OpenGov presentation?
Yeah. Couple weeks ago, I met with representatives from OpenGov. It's a web-based platform that can help cities share their financial information that they have, budget documents, spreadsheets, anything like that. Basically, taking the spreadsheet, putting it into chart-based forms so that people can kind of more easily extract and see the information. It's making it more understandable for broader public. You know, I work well in spreadsheets. I can kind of dig down and get the numbers, but when I do my budget presentations, I like to have, show the chart, show where things have gone from the stored fashion to show where things are in terms of a percentage of the budget. And it takes awfully, often takes a lot of time to do those, put together those presentations. And with our financial software, we only have a few users in the organization that even have the software program, but they're there to enter in the data, make sure that we're utilizing, keeping track of our finances. When I want something, I don't, I'm not the one that uses the data to enter it, and so I have to ask them to run the reports for me so that I can put together these spreadsheets. Well, often, that software doesn't just sync right into Excel where I want to build my spreadsheets and make my charts and graphs, so we have to convert it. Sometimes, when we're converting it, there's either a loss or kind of a movement of the data, so we have to move things around and fix things, and that often takes a lot of time. What OpenGov can do is work with InCode or any Tyler technology products that we have and basically automatically populate that into spreadsheets for us so that we're not having to run these reports, make the conversions, and do all the unnecessary things to make the charts and graphs available. So they have two different versions, an internal and an external. So they're in a number of different cities right now, 45 states. This is from their presentation, so I'm going to skip ahead to a couple of the examples of spreadsheets that they, or charts that they'll show. This is one, just the budgeted, annual budget reports. So what happens is, when you go to the link to the website, and then we can make this available on ours, which will be brought to, usually, your first landing page will be something like this. This is an annual budget report. And how it, it's broken down by the different colors, shows a value by, I guess, the biggest chunk of a department versus the whole city as a whole. So this is the whole city's government, or city government budget. The very top line is the biggest department, happens to be the police department in El Segundo, California. So it automatically does that. It has, you know, built into their software, its ability to build these reports. And you can change it into different forms. So this is a line chart based on percentage. You could do it into a pie chart. You could do it into a graph that shows, you know, the annual totals vertically versus in this whole, I guess, filled-out version. You can do it, and basically, what I've seen is that anything you can put into a spreadsheet or a database for numbers or that, you can get onto this site. So it isn't just, it isn't just for budget data. We can utilize this for water consumption, show our annual water consumption versus, you know, and show that in different sections of the segments of our usage, you know, like schools, how the schools use water, our industries use water, how the commercial districts use water versus how the residents use water. Another good example is with property. The county does a, has a parcel database that they put together every year. We can have that, include that, so that people could actually see all of their assessed values within this and see how things have changed over time. We have all the past years of the information. I'll show an example of a city that does that. They also allow you to put balance sheets, build treasurers, show you where your investments are at. And they even do some future, either future planning, this isn't kind of a budgeted report, shows you where you are in your current year versus where your annual budget is, and kind of gives you the opportunity to see if you're on track. Shows you during that month how you compared the months, previous months of previous years. Not certain what that one was, but then they have a couple of other upcoming features. Now, in my memo, I have a recommendation that we look at this for next year, but after I put that memo together in the packet one out, they informed me that they got, they're going to be launching in July these three new features, dashboards, maps, projections. Now, dashboards is just basically a simplified version of this that gives you a department, the ones that are important for that department, not just every single, every single chart and graph that's going to, that you would have populated on your website. They would just get the ones that you would have for the departments. So I can hold things down a little bit more. Maps, they actually have the ability to put together, using some GIS data, different, a variety of different maps. So kind of anything that you have in GIS, they can put together different types of maps for you and build kind of different models and studies for information so that it's more easily understand. Like examples that they have is capital projects. They can show you the area of town where you're spending money on the capital projects, what's been spent there over time, current data. That's something that we keep track of in the report. We put it in, if we can geolocate that, we can have it put into a map of such, you know, anything kind of map variety. And then the projections is another tool that you can build different options for what you want to show. If you want to show growth of a department or growth of expenses at a 2% rate or 1% rate, it'll show you what that, those trends are going to be over the, over the future so that you can kind of see, without having to do it yourself, it could automatically populate that for you. So what they said was that if these were of interest to us, we could do a six-month lease this year. We could have these as soon as they're launched in July and at no additional cost. For future users, however, there will be a cost for each of these items. Based on what I've seen, there's not a whole lot there that we can't, I think is more advantageous to have of these different options. The dashboard's kind of simple enough that I think we can make do without it. Maps would be neat, but I don't know really beyond what we're doing for our engineering projects, how much more we have in terms of GIS data put together that we're, you know, readily out there. And internally, we have those capabilities anyways, and I would be recommending that we start with an internal site first before we move to an external public site as well. But what we do, what we could do is build internally, we can share publicly with what we're doing in budgets and things like that. And then the projections thing, it's, you know, it's simple enough to build that, your own projections chart, and then put that up onto the software. So that's kind of what I have, based on their information. And I just wanted to also show you the one. So this is Sausalito, California, and they, they're ones that have really embraced this software. So what you can see here is parcel numbers, parcels within their city. And now, this is the whole, full city breakdown of parcels. So you can see over time how the values have gone up, and then in the different colors, we'll show you the different sectors. So blue is single-family residential, green is multifamily, orange is commercial, and the purple is industrial, the yellow, very, very small portions are the exempt, I don't know what STE is for them, and then non-taxable property. But one really neat thing that I like is, as soon as you click on one of these categories, it'll start diving down deeper into the data. So I clicked on single-family. It'll bring me to, it'll filter in just to bring me to all the single-family homes. Now, I don't think it'll deep dive more in this, but I'll go to the, to the annual revenues and show you based on departments. You can actually get this to go down right to an individual transaction, if that's what you're looking for. So we'll click on their non-departmental data and show you where things are at with that. Should have, I don't know, maybe not. So you can see breakdown each of the individual departments. So they have what's called transactions, and that's where it's storing as individual transaction data. And then within each of these, there's going to be a vendor, you know, description, depending on how we record them, they can, you can filter by that. So if they have it filtered out to different funds, you can see where those funds are, you know, what funds are paying for each of the transactions. You know, these are the things that you're seeing every month or every two weeks at a council meeting, listed on the big sheet, but you're seeing those at a two-week time period. This is giving to them in a, you know, full year-long system. So, you know, it's, I think it'd be very helpful for us and our various departments to kind of be able to see that when we're not, we're getting the reports on a monthly basis, but this may be giving us the information as it's uploaded, you know, by the finance department. So I think it's really, could be a useful tool for us in helping to understand the financials in our departments and as the city as a whole.
John, is that something that all of us could even use to, you know, project out sales for the next year, maybe capital expenditure?
Yeah, absolutely. Because we keep all of the, all of the finances, anything that we keep the financial records for within our finances, then we can go right back into the, into the spreadsheet, so it's available for, for those other departments to see. So within the, so it is, it is a program that's based on, they base the finances based on your annual budget. So when I originally was looking at this, I was thinking, oh, just general fund, but it's really as a city as a whole, and we probably want it for every different department. It doesn't really matter how much additional information you put in there, any spreadsheet that you want uploaded, it doesn't impact the price, it's just going to be a single price. So they, this is the updated agreement. They do show a six-month subscription, but for the internal program, this OpenGov intelligence, the annual subscription is $5,000. So there is a one-time deployment fee to get things up and running. And then moving forward, the ongoing maintenance cost for Tyler is only $187, but, so you have some upfront expense and then $5,000 for you moving forward. So, you know, as we're looking at upgrading the website, you know, I think this is something that we should consider in our budgeting for '27. So I know I have shown you in the packet different prices. So there's the transparency one, I think, if you go to the page five of the document, that's the external side, so that would be a separate one. And then if you did it combined, they give you a little bit of a breakdown of price.
You don't think we utilize both of them?
I think it would be better utilized, get more value out of it with the external first, and knowing what we, and getting the charts and things developed. I think it's going to take some time to get what we want to show, what, how we want to be, you know, how we want to present the finances of the city and the other, and other information that can be put into a spreadsheet format in the city later. And there is no additional, like, cost, implementation cost. It's basically, once we say go, the, you know, and we, or not implementation cost, but there's really no other kind of additional work that's needed to do. Once we say go, and these are the things that we want to put on the external site, they could turn them on for us. It's really just a matter of getting that from internal only to an external.
And so you have three years, it's kind of a three-year deal?
Yeah, yeah. Negotiate, yeah, they're negotiating on the three years.
Are you talking 2017? Are these prices valid in 2017?
Yeah.
Are these valid just right now?
These, these prices would be valid for 2017. They would not include those other three items that I showed before.
Which, because you said we really didn't buy them.
I didn't think we really need, but if we wanted to add any of them after the fact, it would be $1,000 per item.
Per year?
Per year.
John, did, did they give you some references of communities that use this?
Yeah, there's one, actually, in Minnesota, right up 94 is Barnesville, and they're utilizing the software as well, so. And then, you know, Sausalito is another, Eau Claire, Wisconsin's another one that's using, not, and not everybody is using everything that they have. Some of them are pretty simple. They just, pretty much for the external site, they're just showing, you know, what's our budget for the year. Like here in Barnesville. In Barnesville, they're just, they're showing revenues and expenses. And then this is where you can kind of click on each of them and you start breaking it down into departments. So this is city of Barnesville's revenue streams for years. And then it only, it'll go back as far as we provide that history for, so, you know, some of them that I've seen have only had like two or three years of history, some have had 10. Really depends on what they've, what they've kept in their history, so.
So you're saying that some of the, some of these graphs and charts and stuff will be placed up on our website so that the community can tell?
Yeah, it'll be a link, it'll be a link to this website from there, wherever any of the users can kind of look and find all of the charts and graphs themselves. Another nice thing that they have is on here is, if you're at the views section, they basically have these frequently asked questions or shortcuts to the different charts. So first one, what are, what are our revenue sources? So if you click on that, it actually brings you to the chart that shows you the, all the revenue sources that the city has broken down. So enterprise funds, general funds, special revenue, that's what it is. Barnesville's electric municipalities, so that's pretty big, significant sources of their funding. You know, in smaller cities, smaller budgets, they're going to have a different price structure than what we have. So ours is based, once, 10 million's kind of the threshold, right? This, for this year, we're at 10,100,000. So maybe next year, if our budget's improved and it's under 10 million, it might be a cheaper resource for us.
Any other questions for John? Have you talked to anybody in Barnesville or there?
I, I have.
So this is more or less an FYI, it's a very eligible action?
Yeah, I'm not looking for an action tonight. I'm just showing, I was bringing to your attention something that I wanted to consider for the, for the budget for next year.
I think it'd be good to clarify, and it's my, my priority to say, I was looking for a, so, so.
Anyone else? Joint City Council?
Yeah, kind of looking to set an agenda for that meeting and inform you that I haven't heard from anybody that May 9th isn't going to work. It is a planning commission meeting night, but we did set the joint meeting to start at 5:30. Funding Commission starts at 6:30. Funding Commission will meet in the conference room, and then the joint meeting will meet here.
And we'll continue on affairs?
Yeah, so, yeah, the Funding Commission members after we've, we're still in discussion. The items that they were looking at for topics were obviously the parking lot, you know, when we wanted to talk about the Humane Society as well. So I think it, based on, you know, I had a conversation with Deb Gruber regarding the Humane Society and kind of the position of where the, where the county is. Their stance is that they, they have a lot of unfunded mandates, and they have a lot of things that they fund that aren't mandated at all. They're doing it, and their position is that they really want to spend more money on something that they're not mandated to spend more money on. So I think if we can talk about the need, the use, the power, the fairest means of financing it, it might gain a little bit more understanding of one another's positions regarding some of these topics.
So, so we're looking at these three as candidates?
Yeah, and then she did ask about their contracts. We just want to, I think it's more or less make sure they're, we're aware of what the landfill's needs are, what the impact might be.
Do we flop the agenda around, in a way?
Sure, yeah.
Upside down?
Yeah.
Or garbage?
Garbage first. Sure.
In case we have a Friday commission.
I want to talk about the parking lot, Bill. With parking lots.
Yeah, but it's, Mike said to tell him for the whole rest of the meeting, if we start it out first.
Yeah. Yeah, might get the, the easy one out of the way. So anything else on that anymore, or what they want to go back before we start sending out some agendas? I was informed that there were township board members that were invited to the meeting, so we may have their attendance as well, just so that we're not alarmed on a lot of other officials.
Oh, that's what we did.
But it is one of those closed discussions. I figured it's easier for us to talk about something in the same room together rather than at our different board council meetings.
So we're, was somebody from the Humane Society going to come to?
Yeah, I did invite Michael Fox to come. I believe he feels that we're planning for.
Anyone else, sir? Okay. Little Falls Fire Department, relief actuary agreement?
Yeah, bring me up to speed on this. The Relief Association did meet with the city a little while ago, and we got some more information from our auditors a couple months ago about, this is something that came up out of the GASB rules. And the GASB is the governing counting standards for, and they want to, and they're, you know, they make guidelines and recommendations and kind of orders for local governments or units of governments in their county that we need to follow because, you know, somebody in the past made a mistake. So their recommendation with GASB 67, 68, 68 even amendments to 67 was that all publicly, public pensions need to go through a more strenuous actuarial process rather than just an audit. An audit will only look at a couple of years worth of, worth of history of actuaries. They're going to go back five years or sometimes even more to kind of delve deeper into the finances of insurance that these pension plans are funded the way they're supposed to be funded. So part of that ruling, the state also creates, kind of utilizes GASB as a kind of guiding document for how to govern cities and their financing and audit procedures. And they've, and they have implemented that for GASB 67 and 68, that they need to be followed by cities with these pensions. If they aren't, we don't get a clean audit, and we don't, if we don't have a clean audit, then we're not eligible for some state financing programs, namely PFA, Public Facilities Authority. And as Greg's going to be talking about tonight, we're interested in utilizing PFA financing to fund a water treatment project for upcoming, starting hopefully in the near future. So it is something that's very important for the city to have, or for the Fire Relief Association, they're really not mandated to do this. It's not something that they would have to do to, to operate if they can keep going on as that says. So we got some recommendations from our auditors about firms that they work with to do actuaries that they found to be pretty good. Got two back proposals. And one, there was a member recommending Hildy at $2,200 for the actuarial year, and then they actually do them every two years, and then the off-year, they just do an update to the, to the previous year. So the on-year's $2,200 and the off-year's $1,000. The Fire Relief Association's agreed that they would pay a $1,000 year if the city would cover the expense for them on their $2,200 expense. So that said, for us, it makes sense for the city to be involved in paying for it. It also is very, very honorable and respectful of the Fire Relief Association to participate as well. You know, I think it's a, it's a show of good faith on their part that they want to work in the city and on it, you know, to keep in that relationship healthy. So we're not really in a position to negotiate with them, tell them that they, they don't have to pay, or that they have to pay for it, and really it's the city's benefit that this happens. So if we were to ever receive PFA funding, I would say there's a very, very strong chance that the interest rate savings on PFA finance projects for our infrastructure would easily cover the costs of these actuaries for a longer period of time. Don't have any specific example, but at 20-year, 1% interest versus 15-year, 3% or 4% interest, or even 30-year, 3% or 4% interest, there's a lot of interest savings there that we're getting by not having to do it. So I think it's very important that we move forward. I think we have it to move forward with our recommendation utilizing Hildy tonight. I think the Fire Relief Association should be commended on their decision to share this policy.
I was at that meeting, and it was good they did vote, showed good favor, but the thing is, is this takes off to contribution, they lose a little bit. What is it, $500 a year because they pay $1,000 every second year?
Every two years, yeah.
And I was going to ask the council if we just let that $1,000 go because we just pumped up our contribution. Now this is not going to be back. Now this is not going to get back. So if we don't do that, maybe we should bump up our contribution five hundred dollars a year. Whichever, but you know, that needs to be in there for them.
Yeah. And maybe that's what, something that the actuary will show us too is, is it'll show us the state, uh, things to finance and, and if this, our contributions that we're making towards the Relief Association pension are, are adequate, it can help us with that too. Or if, you know, if by this measure, if it's impacting us, impacting them, then, you know, maybe we can look to increasing their contributions.
That start this year or?
That would be for, yeah, it would start this year for, follow last year. And we'd love to, want to get it done as soon as we, as we get it.
And getting, getting funding from the PFA, is that pretty positive that we would get the funding from, from them?
It's very likely. There's, there's, I mean, there's little that's in place that if we don't follow the procedures, that we wouldn't, wouldn't get funding through them. It's just a matter of, you know, following the proper procedures, getting on the, you know, doing the, doing the research we've borne and getting on the list. It's more engineer, or studies and I guess engineeringally intensive, uh, PFA financing is, but the costs of doing that extra work are certainly also outweighed by the, the interest rates afterwards. Um, it's not something that they don't ever just turn you down straight for, for if you follow the procedures we're doing. They have additional levels of grant funding that if based on need factors, that we can show, um, that we can qualify for. But I, I am not certain based on the level of projects that we're doing, where we'd stand. And it usually takes some time period before those grant funds, um, or before your city gets, gets to the point where those need factors arise. Uh, my previous meeting, we were on the, um, PFA's list for three years before we ever qualified for the grant dollars, um, for ready to move the project. And even at that point, it was very, we were right on the threshold of qualifying, um, and getting a grant.
So that's grant first of all, now, you're talking?
Yeah. Well, it's grant, it's both. There, there will be a grant portion of it and then there will be a loan portion of the project. And what they do is they make you spend the loan portion first and then the grant funds coming afterwards.
And we already have some PFA funding already. We have done at our waste plant, some of the projects we did, um, two of them down there, we did receive PFA funding on those two projects. So it is something we do realize.
Is that actuarial thing something they've added since we did that?
Yes.
Yes, this, this started, um, the report came back on that in two thousand thirteen, the first recommendations were in fourteen and then the amendment was in fifteen for implementing these, uh, GASP rules.
See, last time this came through, Dan recommended that the fire relief wanted to pursue it. Because it really wasn't benefiting them, and this time it's still not benefiting them. It's benefiting us because we can qualify for that PFA loan.
Yeah. Yeah, but it wasn't a consideration at the time when, when Dan made that recommendation.
I still, you know, just, it was nice. They said they'd pay that five hundred dollars a year, but to keep their fund up there healthy. I was also at that meeting when their representative came in and told them they should actually ask the city for a little bit more, you know, to keep that thing and, uh, in case if we have some bad years like we have, you know, uh, it kind of helps. So I would like to tell them thank you for the offer for the thousand dollars every two years, but no thanks. We, we thank enough of you, you're a good department, you don't get a whole lot from, you know, as far as what they actually do for this community. And I think I'd like to see just the city pick up that thousand dollars, let fire relief stay where it's at. And this is not coming from them, it's coming from me.
Well, and you said the actuarial could show us.
I think it's, that, that's certainly possible. It's going to be a much more in-depth look than what the state audit report that, that they turn in every year. Because that's only looking at what is going to happen in this year, how many are eligible to retire, where is your fund balance at with the total pension? Um, you know, what are your, what's your liabilities and assets have? And if you're falling short, then the cities are automatically coming in and picking up that, that tab, the balance, where that's where they're mandated to do so. Um, and I don't know in recent years if we've had to do that based on the state audit report.
And, and we have, and I think that's one thing, this, the city has agreed to fund the, the fire department, their fire relief at eight thousand dollars a year, regardless of what their state report shows. So there are some years where their report shows they need zero dollars, but we still have agreed to fund them at that eight thousand dollar level. And then, um, probably about three, four years ago, there was a, um, probably two or three year stretch where when the market went down some, um, we were required to make fairly significant contributions to the fire relief, um, just because of, of the market going down. And, and as John indicated, they just look at, you know, one or two years for, and if they look and say, okay, if everybody retires right now, the market's gone down, you're short thirty thousand dollars. So, you know, city, you're going to fund that shortfall, um, and then when the market comes back up, you know, we don't get money back. It just stays within their fund, within their relief association fund and helps them out as they go forward, so.
So either way, fire relief is going to give money to maintain their.
Right, yeah, because we're, we're required, we're going to give them the eight thousand regardless. And if their reports show that they need more, then we're obligated to provide them.
Which if we take their thousand dollars, we're actually giving them seven thousand five hundred because they're losing five hundred dollars. Why, why don't we just pay it a thousand dollars? Because either way, if it comes short, we're going to have to stick money in anyway.
They're offering to do that, I'm going to find out for sure when we get their report back.
I, they're, I mean, they have other revenue sources, some of which aren't eligible for this expense, like the, the, um, grant, uh, raffle fundings or whatever. So I.
This isn't benefiting them at all. It's benefiting us.
I'm not benefiting them.
I think it's a good thing, you know, we do need that, there's no doubt. Uh, the benefits we get from paying that twenty-two hundred dollars and then the thousand, uh, that outweighs what that cost is, so. Either way, we have to pursue it, but.
Well, you know, sometimes when people volunteer to make that contribution in good faith, um, you know, I don't know, maybe, uh, maybe we should take it and say thank you and they, they know. I think it, it's a great relationship. We talked about that, of, it's back and forth, uh, how we support them and they're doing a great job of handling their money. And I, I thought they were financially in, uh, really good shape right now, is my understanding. And if they, even if they would give that to us, we're going to be the ones giving it back if they do fall short, so. You know, if we didn't ask them, they'd lock it up, right?
Yeah. We, I, I didn't make any recommendations to them about, uh, an amount. Uh, when we're presenting this information, I, I was, I came to them very openly saying, I'm not in a position to ask you for anything. And I can totally understand if you don't want to participate, uh, but this is something that the city really needs. Um, and you can't afford to not, not go through with it. And, you know, we, it's, we're going to be asking you for, uh, to participate in helping us get the actuaries complete. So that's a level of, you know, the burden to ask them for, uh, and they volunteered that, to pay that off.
I think the fire department, if you would ask them pretty much anything, they would do because they're grateful for the way the council has treated them in the past. And to them, they were going to say yes no matter what, and it was asked and they discussed it. And the thing I heard more than anything else was, well, they've done so much, maybe if we don't, it might not be as apt to help us out later, you know what I mean? So it's whatever you want to do. I mean, it's like Lori said, if they do have a shortfall, we still have to stick it in. But I'm just saying where I'm coming from and I think it'd be a good favor if we just tell them thank you, you know, we appreciate what you've done. We still appreciate what you're doing and let's just forget it, but. Anyway, I'm done.
So that's our regular agenda?
Yeah.
Special City Council Meeting, May twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, pay equity.
Yeah, so the, the Springstead Report that we got back, um, presented to all the employees, uh, gave them an opportunity that on the presentation of the distribution of points, uh, for their position, they had objected to it. Um, they had an opportunity to go through, uh, department head review, uh, review, city administrator view, and then the Springstead review. Uh, two of them asked for that, that to take place, um, and in both of those cases, uh, Springsteads are innovations to leave the points as they, as they stood. So we're prepared to, uh, bring that to the city council meeting, present that, uh, on the pay equity points. So what we're going to try to, what this presentation does is present a pay schedule that includes all of the city, uh, employment positions that we have and include them all within the same pay schedule. Uh, currently we have, everybody has a points assigned to their positions, but they're not all within the pay schedule. They're as, the same pay schedule, they're all within their bargain, uh, union contracts and whether or not they have a pay schedule or some, um, you know, method of payment over time when those contracts are up. So that, in some years, that works just fine for us. Uh, like this past year when we had our pay equity report, uh, in compliance, uh, we actually came back within compliance for those positions. So pay equity is a, um, Minnesota only rule that makes you, excuse me, makes you analyze, um, all of your positions, assign them a point, level of points, grade them out based on male and female dominated positions to ensure that everybody's paid, uh, fairly and, uh, female dominated positions aren't arbitrarily underpaid. Uh, so in the past, we haven't been in compliance and when that happens, you are forced to raise the pay for those levels to bring them up to compliance. So these reviews are done every three years, uh, and like, likely what we'd want to do is establish, adopt the pay schedule that include, incorporates all city positions, uh, so that we could keep that, so it didn't matter. So that our, didn't matter what department you were in, which bargain union contract that you were part of. The points and the pay are always going to be in a complying fashion. And this pay schedule will work over time, uh, to keep people, um, on good pay commitments with that. So, um, we'd like to do a special meeting with, uh, just the city council, myself and Lori to talk about how we proceed with that.
What, what time?
Um, would five-thirty work for everyone in that, that evening or do one shoot later? And I prefer, I prefer it as Monday. It's a Monday.
It's the fourth Monday.
She did have four Monday meetings this month, yeah, so we're going to keep it busy.
Unfortunately, it's Monday.
I'm still thinking. Have to check my schedule.
It's like that.
We're going to have a fifth Monday off, right?
Yeah. Yeah, there are still cities I meet every week, so. No, I mean, it is not on the list. It's something that we were trying, we're, I wanted to gather input before we, uh, go and present it, but. And explain the, the purpose of the meeting.
You're going to be the president? No, I still could be here.
Oh, that'd be a cool session. Do the first round?
I don't think so. Since we're not actually going to talk about individual personnel and we're not even going to talk about wages, it's strictly going to be the point discussions, um, and the structure of the basic goal. How we want to be moving forward with negotiating with the unions after that. Um, because this will be a point, or kind of going to be the piece that's going to drive negotiations moving forward rather than moving off of what they previously were. This is going to be kind of the development and they're doing a lot of analysis and trying to come up and understand whether or not this can work, uh, whether or not it's fair to what the market's going to bear. And I think that, you know, I think that it does, that it.
How many unions are there in the city?
We have four.
Four?
The county actually does, county has a system where they have one single pay schedule that all of the, every single employee is in the department.
Well, it's going to work, it's just going to, some of them are going to have to get adjusted, up, down to get in compliance.
And then, and there is, yeah, and there is a level of, of adjustment that would take place between, um, different departments, so.
Cameron Park Monument Placement?
Yeah, in terms of you kind of laid out the monument that a little better, the longer we like to include over at, at Cameron Park. Um, you've seen this last fall, I believe. Um, now they want us to move forward with actually getting the, the etching done. Um, so tonight at our regular council meeting, they'll be, or we'll be requesting the, the council approve this, uh, this layout here. It's supposed to be a granite, uh, monument, if you will, with the, uh, the community partners engraved on there that will be placed at, at Cameron Park. So it's about five feet by two and a half feet, uh, from what I recall, um, that they've been putting over by their, uh, by the community gardens in Cameron.
That's just going to be ground mold?
That's right, yeah.
You got a picture of it?
Yep.
Right here.
Yeah.
Just going to be etched on a piece of granite, laid flat on the ground.
Yeah. Like a headstone.
Like a headstone, flat on the ground, yeah?
A flat headstone, yeah.
Piece of granite buried in the ground.
That's it.
Just put the names in the year.
So it won't be anything vertical.
Right. Move right over the top of it. Just roll over it.
All right.
Five years, so that's all for it.
Just keep the etching up.
Any other questions on that one?
Would that be located by the sign?
It'd be over by the, by the gardens right now.
By the garden?
Yeah, because Cameron Park has the gardens, but it also has an area that's reserved for playgrounds.
Other? Do you have anything? Put it down in the agenda, we're just going to take care of that, that thing, take care of that, okay. Anyone from the council?
I've had, uh, a couple of residents, one or a couple of contact me regarding, um, commercial vehicles. Eight of them in the yard, um, along with the fish house grinder and a couple of other things. And, um, so I just, I think Greg, I talked to him about that one. I don't know where we'll add on that or if there's, um, anything we can do. I know we have the discussion, but, you know, you can't say, well, you have two vehicles because you have five, you have a couple of kids that drive and both parents drive, you're up to four already. So just wondering if anybody, I know one of them told me that they had to complain to another councilman and just wondering if anybody else has heard anything or if there's anything that we can possibly do because these, uh, neighbors are upset that, um, they say it looks like a junk car.
The home occupation type of deal at all?
We looked at that with them. We have not, but that's a, that's a problem for someone else.
To address it?
Yeah.
Somebody charming business out there, I guess.
Right.
And one of the complainants said, uh, you know, they kept it immediately, it'd be different, but they're going to get stuff out of there between them on it. I thought it's quite, so I don't know if that, they're correct. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Turned in, we'll turn to seven-thirty for regular meeting.